Okay, Islam. Islam is long. Alright, I'mma go ahead and get started because I don't have much time. So I'm posting this here, Islam, to answer a question from a fellow or a sister more, not a fellow more. Uh, Islam, uh, Islam, Islam, Islam. We are here, we are here, we are here. For thirty minutes more or less, you know, I'm your good sister, or try to be good sister, uh, sister Zarbay. Islam, thank y'all for joining. And if I'm going both ways as usual, because I'm recording something late for later to be, have graphics included on YouTube. So if you want the graphics and some more details, it'll be up on YouTube in the morning, or tomorrow. So, this is our Saturday study session, right? And uh, yeah, it's a bit late, but you know, I figured people had stuff to do during the afternoon. I did, I just got back from the mall actually. Hanging out with the youngsters, you know, spending some time with them. And now I'm here fulfilling my commitment to myself. And uh, yeah, showing up for uh, Saturday study sessions, right? And I figure uh, I was trying to focus on how to do a lawsuit so we can start suing these violators of our basic rights. But I'm like, okay, if I get a question, I'mma answer the question because it's like, well, you know, get the people what they want. And as an aside, if you're familiar with human design, right? Um, you can look it up, it's really interesting. It's like astrology, like astrology is for your soul. Human design is like astrology for your, your physical body. So you can make like, okay, I know what my mind wants, how does my body operate in that realm or in that respect, right? So I'm a manifesting generator. And my thing is, I'm supposed to wait until somebody asks me to do something. I'm not supposed to initiate anything. And then once they ask, it's game on, right? So anyway, uh, sister asked me, um, actually, I'll just read what she asked, asked me, real quick. Um, real quick, because it was just a short message through Telegram, if I can get to it. Do, do, do. Alright, so she asked me, "Um, I was hoping to schedule a call with you." Skip, "I have a marketing company I'm establishing and want some advice on how you think I should file." Okay, Islam, that I can do, right? Because currently, I had, I'm running three businesses, right? Even though I have more than like, okay, as soon as you come, my, my approach is, you know, um, adhering to what, and paraphrasing Phil, Dr. Phil Valentine, every time a Moore opens his mouth, gold falls out. A gold brick falls out, if I'm, if I got that correct. But anyway, um, so every time I come up with an idea like, oh, I think that'd be a good idea. I'mma go lay the groundwork and like claim some, make some claims. But I'm not gonna, I can't actually do nothing to it until somebody asks me, right? I can try, but I'll be spinning my wheels. I've tested it and found it to be true. So since this sister, I was gonna discuss lawsuits, but since she asked me how do I, how does, you know, some advice on how to set up a business? Okay, let me show you, share with you how I set up and run my Moore's business, alright? So I'm just gonna go through the history of it real quick. So first, you should know it was divinely guided. Everything, I don't know if guided is the word. I'll tell people I don't feel guided more than I feel dragged, right? So um, I moved out to California in 2013. And by 2014, through the contributions of some very generous Moores, I was able to open or start a book company, right? I knew a little bit about setting up businesses, but you know, I only had a few books. They weren't making that much finance. Oh my God. It'll be like a little side thing, you know, and at the time, if you weren't making, I think over twelve, twelve thousand dollars or something like that every year, you didn't have to like file taxes. Now it's like, I'm down to six hundred, but whatever. At the time it was twelve hundred. I wasn't selling twelve, or twelve thousand. I wasn't selling nearly close to twelve thousand dollars in um, stuff. So it was like basically pocket money. After the, you know, expenses and splitting the royalties with the authors or whatever. But they weren't really selling because it was a startup, right? So fast forward, what was it? Um, 2018, right? And it started, business starts picking up out of nowhere, right? So I'm like, okay. No, no, what it was, was um, I hadn't incorporated, no, I hadn't incorporated. I just set up the book company through Amazon, right? In my own, with my own personal information. And um, I saw that they were taking taxes out of it. Like, I want no part of that, right? Not that I might, because I'm not paying the taxes. It's okay, you're taxing the customer. And then, you know, it goes to the state. You're not taxing me personally. But I sell Moore's books and I know who you all are. So I'm not okay with products that I'm producing being used to collect taxes for colonists. I'm not with that. So I set up a corporation that was like, well, I can't be tax exempt. You know, and all this money is basically like pocket money. But it's picking up and you charging me tax, or you saying that um, you, you gotta charge withholding. Not only are you charging them, the customers taxes, because that's your platform. But also withholding from my business because I'm coming at you as an individual, the lowest form of incorporation, right? So let me try something else. Hmm, let me look into nonprofits. I can't do really a religious kind of sort. I guess I can't. This is what I'm thinking at the time. I know better now. I can't really do a religious corporation because it's just me. I can't be a religion by myself. Maybe I can, but nah, I don't wanna do that. So I'm like, okay, let me set up a corporation. What's the best way to indicate that this is a non-taxable entity? On top of, we will not be collecting taxes for you either. How can I word this, right? So it won't be no confusion. Start with that. Start with what you're gonna name your business, right? And um, I read a book called um, Through the Umami Strategy by Aga Stoktek. I hope I'm saying that right, because I think she's Swedish or something. It's called The Umami Strategy. Great book. Really good. It's a good read. It's like an interesting read, but you actually learning some stuff. But umami is like, what's that flavor that makes you more savory than your competition, right? And one of her suggestions was, no, no, actually, I'm sorry. No, no, no. This was not in the, see, this is what happens when you read a lot. This was not in Umami Strategy. This was in another book called Pimp My Site. I love that title, right? Pimp My Site. Highly recommended. Great book, right? It's available on Audible too. Uh, I actually, I, I started on Audible with it and then I went and bought the physical copy because it's such a great reference. Anyway, so she was like, make sure, in this day and age, you're gonna have to set up a website. If you're not online, you're not in business, right? So make sure your business name would be, as close, as much as possible, would be what you're, what somebody would Google, alright? Uh, for instance, is one site that I started just because I was looking for some recipes. So I called the site What Moores Eat? Because I figured somebody will Google that. What Moores Eat? And yes, I went and bought everything for it. Even though I, I have everything. I got the website. I think I got a logo. Yeah, I got a logo for it. All the stuff, all the branding ready. I'm just waiting for something to do with it. And I found something. Actually, someone came and gave me something to do with it. I just gotta do that. I gotta respond to it. So anyway, first step, pick a name that is like, I'm letting you know what I do. That, well, the name leaves no question as to what you're up to. So the name I selected for my corporation, or actually, it wasn't even a corporation first. I think we started out, see, this is my Moore's business, alright? So uh, unfortunately, if you're not a Moore, I can't guarantee any of this will work for you. In fact, you might get yourself in trouble, which you deserve, because if, you can do it if you go back where you came from. It'll probably work where you came from, right? But you probably can't get away with it here, right? Unless you set up as a religious organization, but uh, that's later. So anyway, the name um, I selected, I'm like, Allah, give me a name. Here go the guidance part. And I just need a name. What's a good name? Scrolling through Facebook. And I see this elder. I will never claim that I came up with this. I see this elder. He had this name in another state. And I'm like, yeah, I'm about to take that, right? But I will, oh, I cannot remember his name. If it's you, please get up with me and I will be attaching your name to this from now on going forward. But I'm like, yeah, I'm about to snatch that because that's, I'm about to pull a um, a founder move. If you've seen that movie with Michael Keaton, Founder, where somebody has something good. And he's like, you ain't doing nearly enough with this. Yeah, I did one of those. Um, so I, he was incorporating. I'm like, let me make sure this ain't a federal thing with trademarking. Nope. Okay, moving on. So the name I selected finally was, or that Allah provided me because it's, this elder Moore came up with it, was, or is, Mooreish Religious and Cultural Institute, Inc. I love that name because no part of that can be taxed. Let's start with Mooreish. I know who I am. I'mma be a problem. Right there tells you I'mma be a problem, alright? Religious, tax exempt. Cultural, tax exempt. Institute, tax exempt, right? So even if I don't file the necessary paperwork in a timely manner to let you know that you can't charge me taxes, it can be inferred from the business name. And I suggest you all do that same thing. Do something where it's like, you, you playing, you have to be playing stupid or you're incompetent and don't need to be in a position where you can question me about anything. If you can't figure out what this is just by looking at it. What Moores Eat? What's to figure out? Mooreish Religious and Cultural Institute. What's to figure out? Alright, so that was step one. And using that, we acted um, an unofficial, not unofficial, um, unincorporated association. And by me, because I couldn't set it up by myself and all my children were under eighteen and I just moved to a new state and didn't know nobody. So um, I let my daughters, my eldest daughter's father know, yeah, I'm about to use your stuff. Say something. You owe me, but he knew, everybody who basically knows me owes me so much where I could just use their stuff and they'll be like, whatever, right? It's kind of, but I don't stack money, I stack favors. I suggest y'all do the same thing. So I used his name. He was cool with it. Because it's like, I know you ain't gonna say no, so just say yes, right? And uh, so we set up an unincorporated association, right? And then um, that I was able to get an EIN for, right? And because of the way it was set up, because I, the uh, articles of association, not incorporation, association. It said, no, we're, we're just following the, you know, if you wanna know where at, we're doing, refer to the Constitution for the Moore Science Temple of America. That's, that's what we're doing. The bylaws, those are our bylaws, right? Um, our structure, look at the Moore Science Temple. Get it? This is in our articles of incorporation. So if anybody's like, okay, we want some, we want access to your efforts, your energy. Because you know that's what currency is. It's just your energy in the form of paper. We want access to that and we're not gonna give you anything in return. If you don't do it, we're gonna send people with guns to come and put you in a cage, alright? How do I avoid that? By making sure the paperwork is in order so that you know, well, I know I can't do this. And by the way, it's written, they know I can't do this either. And my thing is, I know my, my design, that the human design says, don't be offering stuff. But since this sister asked, I'm responding to her request. And um, Islam to all, before I forget. And uh, I, if, if anybody asks, so I can respond, I will make my paperwork available to you. You know, if you can do better with it, please do better. Do something, because I want my stuff back. And I can't get it back by myself and I know that. I'm smart enough to know that, no, we need to get this as a group thing, right? Islam, set up an educational business. You writing, you in the right spot, because, let, let me finish. Let me continue. Um, so, um, so yeah, that was set up in 2018. It was set up as a nonprofit again, so I could, not only can you not tax me, you can, hopefully, the way I set it up, you can't use my business to tax the customers buying this product. But if you buy through Amazon or somebody, like on my website, I don't collect tax, right? I do not collect tax for these people. But if you go to Amazon, Barnes and Noble, all these other folks, they gonna collect taxes, right? For the right to work here. I don't need the right to work here, right? I'm entitled, entitled to do what I need to do here without paying taxes to Rome. You know Caesar saying, the whole world should be taxed? Yeah, that's true in your world, on your land, you know? I'm not going for it personally. And I suggest y'all don't go for it either. So anyway, so that's why I did it. Um, plus it qualifies. I set it up as a nonprofit because it qualifies as a nonprofit. What do I do? I market, not sell, I market Mooreish religious and cultural materials and items. Books, stickers, t-shirts. It's all Mooreish and it's all related back to our culture. By what right do you have to tax me on that? Colonist, occupier, right? Foreigner, invader. A few more names I got for you. So, next. So that's the first thing. Oh, oh, then later on, um, I, I did my research, did, read some books. And found out, yes, unincorporated associations are great. But if you really wanna make some moves and if you're gonna be making some bank, you expect to be like growing, I suggest you incorporate. Go ahead and incorporate, right? Just like, excuse me, villages might start out as unincorporated Des Moines, whatever, like uh, Hines, Illinois, unincorporated. But eventually, they get enough people, they got enough stuff going on, they incorporate. They become real, real cities, right? So I'm like, yeah, let's move on and incorporate, right? So my daughter's dad was acting up, so I gave him the boot. Like, I don't need you no more. He gonna, an actual Moore, even though he's a Moore, here's somebody who actually, like, was somebody, so I think somebody at the door, whatever. Um, oh, they said, they knocking upstairs. Anyway, yeah, I have a full house as usual. So um, he's a Muslim. He's not a Moore, but this Muslim is more of a more than the, the guy I was dealing with. So I'm like, you're out, he's in, right? So set up an actual incorporation using the same paperwork, same exact paperwork. I just took out association and put in incorporation, right? And again, if anybody asks, I'll make that available to you on my website, right? But you gotta ask me. You can uh, write me at info@khalifamedia.com or islam@khalifamedia.com. So after that was done, I'm rolling, I'm rolling, I'm rolling. Two years passed, 2018 passed, 2019 passed. No, here comes, then here comes 2020, right? And um, COVID hits. I swear COVID was the best thing that ever happened to me. It really was. Because um, by those two, so COVID, they shut down the world in March, um, middle of March, right? Early, middle of March. February, no, March, April, and then May, and they let everybody out. And I'm like, yep, here they go. Uh, the colonies been locked up for a couple of months. They killed no niggas in a while. So yeah, it's about to be some massacres. George Floyd happiness, right? And I'm like, yep, the day it happened. Actually, it was the day after, because I had to wait for the, the system to update. The day after George Floyd was had, uh, killed, I went and checked one of my platforms where I sell books. And I think I sold like twenty-five hundred dollars worth of books in twenty-four hours. So I'm like, yeah, that cannot hit a prepaid card. Let me tell you why I had a prepaid card set up for my business. Every time I went into a bank, I tried this in California. Actually, I tried in Georgia first. Then I tried it in California. I think I tried it in Illinois. Three times, tried opening up a bank using the word Mooreish on it. And got blocked every single time. So I'm like, well, that might not happen in where I am now. I'm in Indiana now. That might not happen here, but I don't wanna waste my time and take that chance. And this looks real sloppy. I don't want twenty-five hundred dollars getting loaded onto a prepaid card. That's asking for trouble, right? So I need to get a real legit uh, bank account for this thing. So my second corporation I set up is Khalifa Media Holding LLC. Again, can you make it where if somebody Googles something, your business name pops up as that query, right? So if somebody looks up Google or Khalifa Media, Khalifa Media Holding comes up, right? And um, that was organized and incorporated by Mooreish Religious and Cultural Institute, Inc. Get it? So it's a, it's um, you can see the um, the thread. You can see the thread running through it, right? So my Mooreish Religious and Cultural Institute Incorporated set up this holding company, Khalifa Media, right? It's not a DBA. I couldn't easily have just made a DBA, but I'm like, nope, we gonna make this a whole separate entity for a reason, right? Um, like I said, um, I needed a bank account because, oh, I'm looking at my notes, because my, I respect your time, right? So um, yup, 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 yup. Okay, yeah, okay, um, dang, I'm on, I'm on, roll. Alright, okay. So I set up that account right after George, because the way my um, this one platform works. So it was like, okay, you get, you got hit with a twenty-five hundred dollars worth of sales in one day in May, you gonna see that three months down the line in August, right? So I'm like, I gotta scramble to make sure that this money loads into this new account. So I'm like, yep, let me just set this up. It's, it's owned, controlled, because it's kept, not really owned. It's a holding company controlled by Mooreish Religious and Cultural Institute, Inc., right? So it can't be taxed because of how it's connected to this business, right? It's just a, it's a pocket. It doesn't, this business connects, collects, or conducts no business. It earns no income, zero. No income, right? All the income is earned by, I'm just gonna call it Mercy. Mooreish Religious and Cultural Institute, I'm calling Mercy. All the income is earned by Mercy. It's reported to the IRS under Mercy. And all the funds are deposited into Khalifa Media Holding. And the benefit of that, that I realized later, because I'm like, I just need to do something right now. Oh, that's what that is? Thanks Allah, appreciate that. Later on down the line, I realized what it, what it really was. So with this holding company, I can open up, use Mercy to open up other companies that will funnel all the money into Khalifa Media Holdings. I only need one bank account for all of my companies. How easy is that? I don't have to keep running down to the bank. Everything's running, you know? It's really easy. So um, I think that's it. And then the third company. Why'd I end up with a third company? Ever heard the saying, um, first slowly, then all at once, right? In my experience, if you make yourself ready, once you do what you're supposed to do, Allah is gonna flood you with blessings, uh, benefits. I'm not gonna call it blessings, right? Right after I opened up that bank account, it just, the money just start flowing, start flowing, start flowing, start flowing. And it made me nervous, because I never had that kind of success so fast. It made me real nervous. So nervous that I opened up a charity. That's the third company I opened was Mercy Charities. So Mooreish Religious Incorporated, Mooreish Religious and Cultural Institute Incorporated, Mercy. Thanks to the Moores, only because of the generosity of the Moores, was able to use a part of that funds to start a charity, Mercy Charities, right? Which has its own separate account. That's a whole separate thing that I can go into later if you all want me to. You gotta let me know if you want me to. That's a whole separate thing, but I'm letting you know. It's, okay. It's amazing what you can do if you approach people as a business versus an individual. Then it's even more amazing what you can do if you approach as a nonprofit or a charity versus a business. I don't have to pay for that much anymore. And it's not because I'm scamming people, it's because I'm helping people, right? But that's another thing, another day. I think that covers everything. I think I answered the question. The sister asked me. So um, yeah, I think that, that's that, you know? Um, I will be uploading this to YouTube if I can figure out how to download it. Um, and then we'll go from there. Oh, before I forget, I forgot to do housekeeping. Before I forget, um, I think it's too late to get orders out for Profits Day, but the stuff is still there. New products, right? So if you remember last time or recently, I came out with stickers for the children, right? These are for the little girls, right? About the turban. And you can get it in glitter or holographic. Couldn't leave out the little, the little Mufхи. Oh, and of course, you can get in a car. Yeah, you get in an optional car. And I'm about to let y'all go. Had to make something for the little Mufхи's, right? So we got the T27s. Messed around. This is actually a little study, study guide. It might turn into a series. I think I might make all the one-on-ones into like a sheet like this so the children actually be interested in learning about our stuff. So that's the T27 sticker sheet. And it comes in just regular, white or transparent and holographic. Yeah, and they're fresh, they're bomb, they're amazing. Moores have been buying them. And I'm sitting over here thinking like, that'd be crazy if I ended up becoming a millionaire off some stickers, you know? And of course, it was just figuring, it's like, do what you love and the money will follow. I love this stuff, you know? Um, yeah, I decided at seven years old, I like me. I wanna stay just like this. Yeah, people call me immature, but I'm extremely responsible, so it's all good. Alright, so with that, thank you Moores. Um, I appreciate y'all showing up. I'm gonna try to do these earlier on Saturdays, like around ten o'clock. You know, because this is actually a thing. Um, I got my good education, European education, especially in the realms of business, um, law, legal, and I'm, I'm dipping my toe into banking. And I have a degree in history and education. So if there's something you would like me to cover, please let me know and I will be sure to do that. Because I'm trying to, I'm trying something out. My design says I have to respond to people. I can't come up with my own ideas. I have to wait for y'all to tell me what you want, alright? So if you please tell me, oh, y'all wanna hear the letter that I wrote to the IRS, letting them know they couldn't tax me? Because I think, last thing, I promise, it's the last thing. Um, the letter I wrote to the IRS, letting them know that they couldn't tax me, right? Um, so this segues from the charity that was set up thanks to you all. So on the journey to set up Mercy Charities, I came across, um, I had to read through all the laws, because I'm not trying to go back to jail. I've been to jail. I didn't like it, right? I got myself out, right? And um, I'm not trying to go back. So I did my homework. And looking at the 501 series, looking at the 503 series, looking at the 508 series, all I need is, okay, I saw that that other stuff is there, but I'm trying to get some stuff done, focusing on 501. But that other stuff is in the back of my mind. So setting up business, setting up business, setting up businesses. And I think I mentioned it last week. I realized that I had never filed taxes on any of these businesses, right? And I'm not waiting for y'all to tell me to do this. I'm going to preemptively let you know, don't come knocking, right? So I wrote them a letter. Um, and again, if you ask, I'll make this available to you because uh, my thing, I love giving, right? My reward does not come from man, alright? And the more I give, oh my goodness, Allah takes ten steps every time I take two steps towards Allah. So I'm gonna read y'all the constructive notice that I just sent them. And um, Allah willing, it'll work, you know? It's like, yeah, I'm doing well, but I'm not dealing, I'm not doing well enough for you to challenge this. Because I'm gonna make you come out of more money than I have in the bank. Because I don't need to hire a lawyer, right? So anyway, um, and I've gotten out of stuff with the IRS before, you know? Because they don't, maybe, I don't get emotional, I don't get personal, and I definitely don't interpret stuff. I use their own stuff against them exactly to the letter. It's real, it's like wiggle out of, wiggle out of your own stuff. I'm not making anything up. I'm not trying to be like, doing no tricks and finding loopholes. If it's theirs, there, you know? But anyway, so here's what I wrote them recently. And I'll let you know, I'm still waiting for the response. And if they ever respond, hopefully, they just want, I'm waiting thirty days and then I'll let them know, oh, you didn't respond. So I'm just, I'm sending this affidavit to let you know you didn't respond. And then from now, going forward, I'll have this, this evidence in case y'all try something later. So to whom it, to whom it, oh, constructive notice of organization as religious auxiliary pursuant to 26 U.S. Code Section 508. Settle in. It's not long. It's a good story though, right? So again, to whom it may concern? Islam. Comes now, Sister Tahida S. Najila L., authorized representative of the Mooreish Religious and Cultural Institute Incorporated, to hereby give constructive notice of organization as a religious auxiliary pursuant to 26 U.S., 26 U.S. Code Section 508 for the hearing named organization. Honor about 2018, Mooreish Religious and Cultural Institute, Inc., business ID number blah, 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 FEIN, blah, 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 was organized pursuant to the statutes of the State of Indiana for the purpose of providing religious and cultural goods promoting the Mooreish Science Temple of America, with a portion of all receipts being allocated for donation to said temples. And ancillary groups and individuals working to uplift fallen humanity per the instruction of our holy prophet Drew Ali. Pursuant to the doctrine of constructive notice. Constructive notice indicates legal notice despite no actual notice being provided. Remember what I said about making sure you picked the right name for your company? It is a notion of presumption of knowledge. Wait, okay, let me restart over. Pursuant to the doctrine of constructive notice, constructive notice indicates legal notice despite no actual notice being provided. It is the notion of presumption of knowledge of that particular subject or information. If certain procedures have been followed, the law will consider a person to legally have received notice, even if in fact they did not. The notice under this, this notice under this doctrine arises by the presumption of law from the existence of facts and circumstances. Based on the publicly available articles of incorporation filed with the Secretary of the State of Indiana, it is assumed that everyone interacting with the Mooreish Religious and Cultural Institute Incorporated is well-buried in its laws and regulations. You could tell just by its name what we're up to. That, then, let me finish. Notice of this entity's organizational intent was provided in the form of the selected corporate name, Mooreish Religious and Cultural Institute, Inc. This name was specifically selected to remove all doubt as to the purpose and mission of this organization that has been formed for the exclusive purpose of providing educational and cultural materials to lawfully charter congregations of the Mooreish Holy Temple of Science and its corporate entity, Mooreish Science Temple of America. Not Inc. Do not put Inc. on there, okay? Because that Inc. is some stuff that, um, who was that? The, uh, the Trader Moore set up. It does not have Inc. on it. If you look at our authority, there's no Inc. on there, okay? Be careful with that, okay? So revenue is generated by marketing of said materials, the bulk of which is produced by leadership of the above-named entities to the public, with no less than twenty percent of all receipts being donated to the above-named entities and Mercy Charities Incorporated. And by that, I mean, um, if you're an author with Mercy Char, or Khalifa Media, And by that, I mean um, if you're an author with Mercy Char- or Khalifa Media, Andrew Grant Sheet, that twenty percent goes to your temple. It doesn't go to Mercy Charity, it comes to you, okay? Um, so it goes, so the receipt's being donated to the above-named entities and Mercy Charities Incorporated, Indiana Business ID blah blah blah, FEIN blah blah blah. Which is charitable arm of our organization designated as a five oh one C three organization. Distributions to recipients are made via Khalifa Media Holding LLC, Indiana Business ID blah blah blah, FEIN blah blah blah. Do you see how I'm letting them know? These are all the ones. Please don't mess with them, please. Alright, because you really, by law, you, by the law that I read that you wrote, you can't, right? And I'm putting in here that I know you can't. So if I, if I'm telling you I know you can't, don't you think I can defend myself? But you know, I, I, I try to, I try to be Mike Tyson. You train so much that don't nobody want to fight you. Um, okay, so, our activities may be viewed by visiting khalifa media dot com, mercycharities.org, and moorishamericans.org, okay? And then I put in the code of twenty-six US, twenty-six US Code, Section five oh eight. So I was like, no, here's what I'm referring to. I'm not gonna make you look it up. Here it is right here. And then um, twenty-six US Code, Section six oh three-three, returns by exempt organizations, letting them know why I don't have to file no returns with y'all. Like, good thing my books are in order, right? So I'm always ready, right? For not, I hope I'm ready for no good reason, but I'm, I'd rather have it and not need it than need it and not have it, right? So this is letting them know I'm a five oh eight, or this is a five oh eight, five, five oh eight corporation. And that five oh eight corporations are required to file returns, okay? So, wherefore, Sister Tahida S. Najila L., Secretary Treasurer and Authorized Representative of Moorish Religious and Cultural Institute, Inc., does hereby give this constructive notice of the formation of said entity from its outset from the, for the sole purpose of operating as a support promotional and charitable auxiliary of the Moorish Holy Temple of Science and its corporate arm, the Moorish Science Temple of America. Peace, me. And then I uh, made sure to copy that to the, so this is sent to the Secretary of State for Indiana, because pursuant to Code, Section five oh eight, I have to notify the Secretary of State. But I don't trust y'all, so I'm sending it to the IRS too. Because I don't know if y'all have noticed or if you heard, there's a law, the Corporate Transparency Act, where if you have an LLC, you have to like, they don't even have a platform set up for this yet, but they expecting you to do this by the thirtieth of January. Right? You have to report like, who all has an interest in your LLC, their social security numbers, their percentage of interest, where they are, all this stuff, right? All this crazy stuff. And if you don't do it by January thirty-first, if I remember correctly, it's I think a um, thousand dollar fine. And then for every day after that, it's another five hundred dollars every single day. So, let me let y'all know. Oh, but there's, there's twenty-three exempt organizations, twenty-three. It's, yeah, it's twenty-three, I think. And um, it said uh, charitable organizations or religious organizations and their associated auxiliaries are exempt. Right? You don't even have to let them know, but I'm letting, you said I don't have to let you know, but I'm gonna let y'all know anyway. So with that, now I'm done. Thank you for your indulgence. I appreciate that again. If you have some questions, hit me up at islam at khalifa media dot com, info@khalifa media dot com, you know, or khalifa media at gmail dot com. And let me know what you want to know. And I think that's it. Islam, peace and love, and I'll check y'all next time. Bye bye, y'all.